Live?
Working, accelerating. No crews.
We're live.
The Regis.
In the brown.
It's like, I can't speak so well.
Live?
Let's get it right. We're racing. We're racing. One nation.
We're live.
We're live. Thank you, everybody. Welcome.
The Regis. In the brown.
It's like, I can't speak so well.
Live?
Let's get it right. We're racing. One nation.
Well, we don't sound good.
That's all right.
Sound underwater.
Okay.
You ready?
You're good.
Again, thank you, everybody. Welcome to April fifteenth council meeting. All of my colleagues are here. The auditor is here. And we will do Brittany, I'll throw you under the bus first. Department updates.
Thank you. Please let me go first because I have some dispatch snacks to pick up for the girls that someone's making. So, thank you. Just a few things. We're working on the police supplementation. So, we plan to go live in July with those protocols. Like I've said before, it's priority dispatch. It's who we use for medical. We're going live with the police. So, that's just going to provide the protocols for different call types for the police. So, next month, the first two weeks, I have split basically dispatch in half for them to have instructors come in person to teach these classes for the police dispatching to the girls. So, we got a busy couple of months coming up. I reviewed and rewrote a policy for the activation of the warning sirens. So, before it was just basically tornado sirens. I think times have changed with these straight line winds and such. It was kind of time to revamp that a little bit. So, the policy basically states if it's a severe thunderstorm warning with winds in excess of sixty-five miles per hour, we're going to activate the warning siren. It's just getting a little... This last storm that came through was the first time I had that policy. It was kind of touch and go because a lot of times when we get those winds, they're not quite Fulton County yet. So, we don't want to cry wolf. So, I think we'll just be kind of watching it closely and making sure that we're doing that. So, we're not setting them off all the time. So... And the storms, we've done really well. You know, we've been overloaded with calls, of course. But really with EMA, all the emergency responders, sheriff, police, highway, everybody. It's been a... It's been going really great as far as communication and getting things done. On April twenty-second, my assistant Jennifer and I will be at a director's summit in Indianapolis. It's only one night. So, I think it's in Carmel. We're just a few minutes away, basically, if we need to get back. But I'll have my laptop, phone, everything that I need to get fired up, just in case we have something going on. And this is telecommunicator week. So, we're spending the week. We've had some community involvement of donating things and whether it's food, gift cards to help celebrate the girls. And they've really enjoyed it so far. So, that's why I got to go. Someone's making us a cake or cookies, so we can't miss out on that. I did lose an employee. Now, I can't say that I haven't lost anybody, dang it. She was one of the new ones. She was just about ready to be cut loose. And, you know, she just wasn't... It wasn't her thing. So, we were six months in. That's unfortunate. But we have posted the job seven days ago in-house. So, I posted it today in the public. So, fingers crossed we get some good applicants. And lastly, just some of the reports for March. Nine-one-one inbound calls, we have five-hundred-and-ninety calls. Admin lines, we had two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty. And outbound phone calls, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight. So, we're on the phone a lot, which is our job. So, I think that's really all I have.
Any questions or comments for Brittany?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank your people that do a good job.
Thank you.
Dawn?
Mine's real quick. And I think some of you guys have already heard this. Okay, we talked to the council, talked to the county attorney. We're working on spreading... Splitting Richland Precinct in half to balance out the commissioners' districts. So, we're working on that. Seth did a great job in our maps. I really appreciate that. We have to send them to the state. So, I filled out the survey with the state. And now, we just are kind of waiting on them to see what our next step is. So, I just want to let you guys know that it's not going to mess any of your guys' areas up. We checked on everybody's address to make sure we weren't going to mess up any of your areas. So, we're good there. The commissioner has approved me signing a contract with Pay Court, which is a collection agency. And we're going after everybody that owes us court costs and fines back to two thousand, which is on the low end, a little over one-point-four million. So, hopefully, that'll bring some extra revenue into the county and to the state. But we're working on that. It'll take a while for it to start flowing. But we're hoping that it works. Several other counties have already started the process. So, they've said they've had good results. So, hopefully, we do too. There's just too much money sitting out there.
This is pass-through funds to the state or some?
Some will go to the county. And then, some of it'll go to the state. So, like when I turn in my state check every month with all of our court costs and everything in it, some of it gets divided. That all goes to the county. And then, twice a year, I send a check to the state for their fees too that they give. But a good chunk of it will come to the county, the public defender fund, all of that. So, I think it'll... I think it'll make a big difference, actually. So, hopefully, that works. And then, the only other thing that I have is we're working on cleaning out the attic as best we can. And at budget, I had asked to have some of my clerk perpetuation funds for imaging. And it kind of got kind of a crazy mix-up with my part-time payroll coming out of the clerk perpetuation fund, but it can't. So, me and Kathy have talked about it. And I think you have an appropriation there tonight on it. So, what I would like to do is take that money plus a little bit more out of my clerk perpetuation fund and start my imaging. So, if you guys want to look at that and let me know if that's okay. But I just wanted to run that by you because we need to start imaging all the...
Now, that additional appropriations only for the amount for?
For that.
For that.
Right. Then I'll have to do another one. But I just kind of wanted to give you a heads-up to think about it. So, I'll get that done too. But I wanted to get that through first, and then we'll work on that. But just so we can start doing the imaging in the attic and starting cleaning out some more stuff. But all the order books have to be imaged, and that's going to be a huge project. So, it's going to take a lot of money. So, hopefully, we'll collect enough. And that's all I have.
Any... Go on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's get the easy ones out of John Geiger.
You sure it's an easy one?
Yeah. Trust me. You're the easy one tonight.
I appreciate... I appreciate you letting me talk for the next hour or so. Really, I don't have a lot. The guys have been patching holes, running the brush cutter, grading gravel roads. They've been... They started laying the millings. You guys have all probably seen the big pile millings we have out there from Old Thirty-One. And we got another big pile, Kiwanah. They started laying them, building some new roads. They're doing a great job with it. You'd be proud of them for the work they're doing. I am. They also put in a large culvert, which was a community crossings project on three-seventy-five West. They got that done there since the last meeting. That was an eight-foot around pipe, two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet long. Took three excavators to set that down in there. The guys done that. It was a pretty impressive job that they done. So... Call it a ditch actually kind of runs with the road for a good stretch. It was a big project. They've done some pretty large jobs this winter. I'm proud of them. They do good ju... Good work. Remember that when it comes race time, Ron.
Now, is that... How many sections of culvert is that?
It was...
Rolled together?
I think five sections. But they picked it up and set it in as one piece.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It took three excavators. So, slowly, I mean, it took a long time to gently put that in there. Had no hiccups whatsoever when it's smooth as possible. I've got it on video if you want to see it sometime.
I may ask see it.
Pretty impressive. The mayor, they... I talked to the commissioners last meeting. He did ask for two thousand tons out of that pile we got at our cost of milling it, which is our expense in it. They're putting a new water tower in out by the little truck stop, making a road there. So, they're going to use those millings. Commissioners gave that blessing. I did want to talk to you tonight about the bond. The bond we currently have. I know you guys are working on the future. But so, the last bond, there was three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars set aside for Bridge One-Sixty-One. Bridge One-Sixty-One is a federal aid job that we just let down at Grass Creek. That was like a one-point-two-million-dollar bridge. But we had to save back our match. Somewhere out of my control, I didn't ask for that money to be set aside in a bond for that. I asked for that amount to be used for equipment. That money's still sitting there. We've already met our match. The bridge is paid for. It hasn't built yet. It will be built till June. But our match is already made. So, now the end dot's taking care of everything on that. But that money's still sitting in the bond. It was appropriated for that bridge. We originally wanted it for equipment. And I guess I'm just coming to you guys tonight to ask if that money can still be allocated to the highway so we can use it for the things that we need out there. We already, like I said, we already saved out our budget for that match. And it shorted us on equipment. So, that's what I'm asking you.
Any questions, comments about John's request?
Equipment. Got equipment you're talking?
Well, trucks, loaders, motor, loaders, but stuff like that. And then, I did have a conversation with our engineering company today, USI. We've got a bridge that I'm going to be talking to the commissioners about. We might want to use that money towards another bridge. But I guess my thing is I need to know if that money's allocated to the highway like it was supposed to be. We can use it wisely moving forward in the next year or so.
You have to designate what's for, or can we change the designation?
You can change the designation how you want to. You have certain things that you guys have marked it for, but...
Look, it got changed without...
You can change it any way you want to.
Did everybody hear that? We can change that. So, if we just allow John to put it back into equipment, shall we say, or?
Equipment or other uses. Bridge or equipment.
Bridge or equipment instead of being put on Bridge One-Sixty-One.
Because One-Sixty-One's taken care of.
The money's allocated for the highway.
For the highway.
How you designate it, you can change that at any time. You just have it allocated that that portion is his.
As long as we have it designated the highway department, then he has come to us to get rid of it anyways.
Yep.
And we will, you know? We're not going to... I don't have intentions of spending it tomorrow or anything. But I just want to know that it's there and we can plan to use it.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it, that that money still be allocated to the highway department. So, move. Any move? Second? Anybody? I didn't hear.
All second.
Very second at all in favor? Seven-zero.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. How much was it? Three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Wrong way to hear it.
Which, like I said, I'm going to have to have a conversation with our commissioners soon. We may need that for a bridge.
And that's fine.
It sure helps planning.
Yes, it does.
Knowing that it's available. That's pretty much all I had. I did want to make a... Just make a statement. We hold a lot of stuff up to... We'll have concrete. We'll do a culvert, bridge, whatever. We'll have junk concrete, junk asphalt that we can't use. We might not have anywhere to take it. We've been Jackson Recycling up here on seven-hundred North, the US Thirty-One. They've been gracious and letting us take that, dump it there free of charge. He said, "All I ask is maybe at the next council meeting, you just kind of put a little plug in and give me some advertisements." We greatly appreciate his services too. Donation to the county.
So noted. Thank them.
Ever tried using any of his rip rap or anything for like coffers or anything?
We haven't. We've thought about it. Yeah.
Different stuff for home, replaced stuff.
Good. We haven't done it yet.
At least it's not filed enough out of the dirt.
I guess I did ask him to put a bid in at the next bid letting for stone. So, that way, we use his services.
Any other questions for John?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
The millings for the city?
Mm-hmm.
We're selling it at cost of what we have in the millings?
Yes.
Are they paying you to load it and haul it, or are they taking care of it?
They haven't asked... They haven't asked us for anything other than the millings at this point. So, I'm assuming that question will come soon.
Right. Obviously, if you're going to load and haul, you're going to have further time.
That subject hasn't been brought up yet. I got a feeling it will be.
Well, that's kind of why I was asking.
Thank you, John.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, let's see. Which one are we going first? Travis?
I'll be easy. I emailed out the reports. Is there any questions on those or anything? Jail population this morning was a hundred-and-four. We're holding forty-seven for Grant County, fourteen federal, and then two for DOC. We invoiced ninety-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars in March for holding out-of-county inmates and federal inmates. We had testing and then for merit deputies, we had physical testing, written testing. And then, we had interviews last week. We're going to be taking two to the merit board this Friday for recommendations for the two positions we have open. We added Southern District Courts to our MOU for the marshal service. The way the MOU was written initially was just for the Northern District Courts. We offered up forty beds back in twenty-three when I first came in office. They haven't came anywhere close to needing that many beds. So, they reached out to Southern District Courts and said, "Hey, by the way, we've got some beds up here." So, anyway, Southern District Court's going to be in with that. It's the exact same per DM. It's the exact same reimbursement for transport hour, transport hourly rate. The only difference will be is if we've got to take them to court, it'll be Indianapolis instead of South Bend. So, that's really the only difference with that. Brittany mentioned dispatch weeks. This week is also animal control officer week. So, Sam Sorak, she's been with us for right out of here now, doing an amazing job. So, if you see her out and about, just tell her thank you. I think you got to see her yesterday, right?
Yeah, I did.
We do have Corrections Week and Law Enforcement Week coming up, the first two weeks in May. Watch for emails concerning... We typically do a breakfast for our staff one week, and then we'll do a lunch for the staff the other week. We'll do some type of fundraising. We haven't decided yet. We kind of upped the ante last year with Ride the Lightning. So, I don't know if we're going to be able to top that or what we're going to do. But we'll do some type of light... Or some type of fundraising that week for Shop with the Cops. So, I think that's all I've got. Unless you've got questions for me?
What was the number again?
For the invoiced amount?
What we got invoiced?
Ninety-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
I have a couple of other questions. I'm going to put you on the spot.
All right, I'm ready.
How much is that building costing us?
The maintenance building?
Maintenance building.
I'd have to look.
Well, the reason being, the reason I question that is I got a couple of things that... I'm a little slow sometimes.
So, the...
Listen, but last year, we appropriated, and this was in July, we appropriated a hundred-thousand dollars.
Right.
And then, in November, we had another additional appropriation of fifty-thousand dollars. So, that's a hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yep.
Last month, you brought to us that the building was put in the wrong place. Now...
I brought to you that the concrete was going to cost a little bit more.
Yeah, but wasn't it because the building? Now, explain to me why. Because I was under the impression the building was not put exactly where it was supposed to be.
The way it was explained to me was the approach is a little bit longer than what it was and what it was originally designed for. Now, who did that? Whether it was between Burns and the concrete people, I don't know. Concrete thought it was only supposed to be X amount of feet from the asphalt. And Burns said it's going to be Y amount.
Well, my concern is, is that our problem?
I don't know. I guess it depends on whether we want concrete all the way to the asphalt or not.
Well, no, no. But if we say this is what it's done, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I understand, yeah. Chad's been running this. I've just been kind of...
If we got specs for X amount of concrete?
Right.
Then that's...
And I think that's what the...
Someone made a mistake.
Yeah, somebody did, yeah.
Or...
I can't tell you whose mistake it is. I don't know.
Okay. So, that's going on. But, you know, here we've got a hundred-and-fifty, and now I've got two more additional appropriations.
So, at the end of last year, the money that wasn't spent out of the hundred-and-fifty went back. So, we had to do the appropriation for like seventy-six thousand to get us back up to the hundred-and-fifty. So, that's one of the appropriations you'll see.
Okay.
Seventy-six, some change, I think.
Seventy-six.
So, that gets the original hundred-and-fifty back to what you guys approved last year.
That amount should have been encumbered.
It should have been encumbered, and it was not encumbered.
Okay, all right. That answers your question.
So, that's that seventy-six. And then, fifty is for the electric, gas, or yeah, electric gas. What was it, electric gas? And then, the concrete. Chad got a quote back from Core for twenty-five thousand for HVAC, which we think is extremely high. So, he's looking at other local places for that. But that's what that additional fifty was for.
So, do we have an idea of what the cost of this building is going to be?
It'll be under two.
Oh, yeah.
I'm certain of that.
But we really don't know.
I don't know of anything else. Again, I've been on the peripherals of it. I don't know of anything else other than what's sitting in front of you that we'll need, that Chad will need.
Okay, so, was the fifty encumbered or is the fifty extra?
The original fifty. You're asking about...
Yeah. This fifty, we had fifty here, and now an additional fifty here.
I'm on a...
This what didn't get encumbered?
It should be seventy-six. That should have came from...
There's one for seventy-six.
That's from last year. Then there should be an additional for fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
So, the total cost is growing from one-fifty to two-hundred?
Two-hundred is what he's hoping for, yeah.
Okay. I thought we approved it not to exceed a hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, that I don't know.
And that again, it's kind of... That was excellent.
I can have Chad come in at the next meeting and explain everything. Like I said, I've been on the peripherals of it. I do know everything that's being paid out of this, coming out of the jail maintenance fund from the holding the out-of-county inmates. So, it's not coming out of County General or anything.
No, I understand that. But I also don't want it to leak that.
Oh, I understand. Yep, I understand.
Because eventually, we're going to have some maintenance issues at the jail.
Yep, I agree.
All right, I just...
Yeah.
Was trying to question why all of a sudden?
Yeah, I could certainly look into it and get back with you, email you back on it, or have Chad at the next meeting where he can explain that stuff to you. Because like I said, on the concrete stuff, that's the way it was explained to me. But to tell you whose fault it was, I have no idea.
Well, you see where I'm coming from.
Absolutely, yeah.
If someone put the building, build a building for me and they put it wrong?
Right.
You fix it.
Right. And I, again, I don't know if it's Burns or the concrete. I don't know if, you know, concrete specs weren't far enough or Burns. I don't know. I can't answer that.
Anybody else got any feelings on this? Shouldn't all be me?
No, I'm curious. I thought we... I don't have the minutes in front of me. But I'm pretty sure we approved it to not to exceed a hundred-and-fifty.
But that I can say, I can't answer.
And then, I don't remember. And I'm sure it's a minor cost of the building, the setback being different.
Right.
I'm sure that's not a huge part of this. But still, if they build it in the wrong spot and need more concrete, they should pay for that. Whether it's the site prep, the burn, or whoever, that shouldn't be the end customer's problem.
Oh, I agree.
But I'm sure that's a minor amount that is told.
Yeah. Actually, I'll get all the information put together and email it out to you guys. That way, you're not in the dark. If I had known about this ahead of time, I would have had it available for you. So, I'm just not...
I just was digging through this last weekend and...
Yeah, I'm just not at a hundred percent speed on the maintenance building. I mean, he talks to me about like the quote coming in from Core for twenty-five thousand. But I mean, as far as...
Are you... What are you putting in a fridge wack? Just heat?
He was looking for heat. And then, he's got an office that he was just going to do the air conditioning, the wall unit air conditioning.
He doesn't have an office now currently?
He's in our security office. It's more like a broom closet.
Any other complaints to Travis?
I'll get that information put together.
I would appreciate that. Yes, that way, we can... I can feel a little bit better about it.
Definitely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I run out of people, Seth. It's up to you.
We can't recast any more.
The Mud Creek, or Mud Creek, I'm sorry, Mud Lake situation again, Lost Heiser Ditch. We built the dam up, like I said, caller. Then we did the first one, went it blue in March, the day of the council meeting. The lake has come back up quickly, which is great, other than now it is going over the bank, which is what the intention was anyways, and going into property owner's ground and then kind of work its way back around slowly, come back into the ditch. Again, when this happened, I called the property owner, and he said he understood, et cetera. Now, he's upset about it and is asking for a fix. One thing possibly we could do, and we're in discussion, I'll tell you right now, our county attorney has told us just to hold where we're at and stay put, not do anything. But in talks with commissioners, et cetera, a possible scenario is to take another dirt dam right behind the one we have now, put in a tile, basically create as a control structure. And then, we'll slowly let the first one loose. That way, the water's not beating on it and let the water go through as a control structure down downstream to Rock Lake. The issue is the risk on this, which could be if water gets underneath this pipe, it could erode out the dirt, the second dirt dam, the one I'm somewhat proposing. And at that point, we lose both dams, and we lose the lake. And at that point, we lose both dams and we lose the lake and water goes to Rock Lake. And temporarily, I mean, you're looking at a day or two, but it, fast water coming in till that gets out and it gets over the Rock Lake dam, et cetera. And the residents of Mud Lake at that point would lose their lake for the summer, for the spring, summer recreational. So, what I'm asking is, is if we decide to go forward with this, is the cost, again, from you guys to put in another dam. I've got a quote from Koleziak to do this of eighteen hundred. If we do this, and again, this will be up to you too, they have, it's called an anti-sea plate. It's basically a thin piece of steel cut out perfectly that you put over as a plate on the front end of, of a tile, it's gonna be a fifteen-inch tile. And that would probably cost close to five hundred just to get it here shipped, et cetera, on the quotes I saw. So, we'd be looking at twenty-three hundred. In case there's a hiccup, I'd be asking for twenty-five hundred if we decide to go forth with this. Again, as of now, our attorney is telling us to hold still, just wait on the permits. The permits are supposed to be issued that we've been told by RQAW to DNR by the end of this month. So, we're looking at two weeks. That's what we were told. That's also, you guys know, probably a best-case scenario. So, let's get, say, they get issued in May. I don't know what DNR's timeline, IED's timeline, et cetera, that they go through and approve and say, yep. We agree with what RQAW is proposing for the county, send it to the county so that we can get our contractor back out there and fix this permanently and be done with it. So, I'm here again to ask for twenty-five hundred if we decide to go forth and put in a control structure, to say. Pete.
I've been trying to follow the emails you've been forwarding. Am I understanding correctly that this new structure for twenty-five hundred dollars is gonna stop water from flowing onto a residence property that is designated wetlands?
That is, that is yes.
Okay.
You're correct. It is a designated wetland on that side of, which is why...
Which is designated wetland is prone to flooding.
You are correct. You are correct. This would be a possible twenty-five hundred dollar Band-Aid fix.
To stop wetlands from getting wet.
You are correct.
Okay.
I, you are correct.
I wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly in the emails.
Yes. So...
Shouldn't, shouldn't this be a, I guess, drainage board decision of what you decide to do and then figure out how to pay for it?
The decision for the drainage board, again, from the talks that we've had privately with our attorney, and again, I've been, you know, you guys have seen it, I've sent, Holly's involved. She's told us to hold. As far as the funding goes, the Lotsenheiser Ditch does have its own account, like every ditch on maintenance. The residents on the lake feel that they should not have to pull money, use money out of that account to fix this because it was a blunder on the county's part, my part. I'll tell them the contractor to swap the ditch and he wouldn't, you know, how this issue started. So, you guys could say, no, we're not gonna pay for it, force it out of that account. Um, let's use, for example, there's a thousand acres, I think a thousand eighty-five, let's use a thousand acres, simple math, in that watershed. So, if the total bill on this costs twenty-five hundred dollars, thousand acres of the watershed, that's two fifty for benefited acre, correct? Uh, one of the landowners has twenty-two acres, so you're looking at eighty-eight and half of that, half twenty-two would be eleven. You're looking at a hundred bucks in his case, and, you know, that he would be prorated out, put into this, into this temporary fix to get the permanent fix. And, you know, I understand what he's saying, that he has to believe he should have to pay the penalty. So, that's why, that's why I'm coming to you guys, 'cause word for mention, you know, for, he wasn't happy with this back when I proposed this in last fall, and that's why I asked again this time, to see if maybe, okay. Change heart, and I'm sure you probably read that email where they don't, they don't wanna risk losing the lake, and I fully get that.
I understand them not wanting to pay, and I agree with that. I don't think they should, 'cause it was a mistake on our, or our representative's mistake. So, therefore, I agree that it shouldn't come out of the ditch fund. We should correct it. But my question is, if, why put a Band-Aid on it if we're gonna get a permanent fix? Twenty-five hundred bucks right now is gold.
Again, that's, that's, you know, I've talked to commissioners individually. That's kind of the consensus I'm getting. It's what the attorney said. I am just asking in case, in case we have to pull the trigger, in case the, we decide as the county to do this, that I have the funds to do it. Now, if you guys tell me no, makes my decision easier.
I don't think it's really our decision. I mean...
The decision from you guys is the funding.
They give you money.
Correct, that's, that's good.
But I think, yeah, we have legal representation telling us not to do it, so I feel like that's more so what we should do as a county.
So, again, I'm, I'm asking for the money. If you guys say no, turn me down. I get it.
Can we give him money that he may not need? I know that sounds silly, but I mean, if they don't go forward with this, he doesn't need the money.
Yeah, how would that work, Kathy? If we don't go forward with it?
We could, we, we're approving something that may not even come to fruition.
I think we could approve it based on the fact that if it does come to fruition, he's got the funding. But other than that...
Where are you gonna take the funding from?
Can't write him a blank check, no. Pardon me?
Where are you gonna take the funding from?
Probably where we're taking the funding for the rest of this ad hoc, for a rainy day. And it's not ideal, but... So, you're right. No, you, you have to know that.
I, I guess I was struggling. I'm struggling with the concept of spending money to keep a wetland from getting wetter, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic.
No, Pete, I, I understand a hundred percent what you're saying, and that's been part of the conversations we've had, you know, I had with the attorney and I've had individually with
Yeah, I mean...
The drainage board, essentially.
I understand that person's upset because they're getting water on their property. We used to own river bottom property, and when it got wet, sixty-five acres, you were lucky if there was two acres dry.
Correct. The, the only difference in this scenario is that what's holding it back now is an artificial man-built dam in this situation.
What was it before? Beaver dams?
It was a bunch of beaver dams staged. And, again, when that held it back, it, it, I think he said two or three times it got over his bank. One time, there was a, uh, private crossing just downstream, three hundred feet from the road, that collapsed. Well, same scenario, that served as a dam and held it back.
We wanna get the lake back to where it was.
And the lake at this moment is there.
At this moment?
At this moment is there. The one thing I don't want is the residents get their boats in so they can enjoy the lake, and then something happens and this lets, lets loose. But I think if we went forward, the anti-sea would help that, that plate would help, and then all of a sudden, they can't get their boats out. And there's, you know, they're stranded essentially.
Any ideas, thoughts?
Like I said, this is a risk versus reward scenario.
What's the DNR thinking about?
Uh, DNR said that it is, they, they're not gonna force us to do anything. This is between the county and the, uh, property owner.
Okay, is there any, like, engineering or anybody that's making recommendations that carry any weight?
Uh, the only recommendation right now is mine. I could hire an engineer, but I guarantee it's gonna be a lot more than what I'm asking for now.
I didn't know if the DNR had an engineer that...
Uh, not that I know of, and I don't know if they would...
Not for free.
Put their neck exactly.
What did RQW have to say about?
As far as...
Dam, the engineering, did they say anything?
No, they said that as long as DNR's not forcing you.
I guess I'm kind of inclined to follow the advice of our county attorney, let it ride.
I agree.
Alright, I will entertain a motion that we follow and we, at least for the time being, go with our legal counsel and not do anything until we get permits from
RQW.
RQW. I will entertain a motion.
I move.
Pete moved, second.
I'll second.
Chase seconded, all in favor? Seven, zero.
Alright, thank you.
See what they, what they decide.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Busy right now collecting taxes.
Do us a good job. We need them. We need them. Any else? Anybody else? Okay. We have a rainy day resolution. And I will read this one as Resolution Number Zero Four One Five Two Zero Two Five. It's a resolution requesting a transfer of funds. Be resolved by the County Council of Fulton County as follows. The transfer of funds under IC Code Thirty-Six-Dash-One-Dash-Eight-Dash-Five, as requested by the County Council of Fulton County, Indiana, has been found by the proper officers to be necessary. The County Council does hereby transfer two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from County General to the Rainy Day Fund for budget year two thousand twenty-four. This fund shall be subject to the same appropriation process as other funds that receive tax money. Any questions, comments, quest- questions again? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution. Zero Four One Five Two Zero Two Five.
Oh, she did adopt.
Steve moved to adopt. See, the second?
I'll second.
Chase seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you very much. So, I have something here to sign. Sure we signed on the right side? Thank you. And next is Grant Approval Ordinance. Commissioners have started the adoption process. And they will have the final reading at your next meeting. Is that correct? And I'll read this as written. Zero, Ordinance Zero Four Zero Seven Two Zero Two Five. Fulton County Board Commissioners, Fulton County Council. An ordinance adopting a Fulton County Grant Approval and Administration Policy. Whereas the County of Fulton, Indiana is an equal opportunity employer, and whereas the intent of the County of Fulton, Indiana to comply with applicable federal and state of Indiana employment laws and regulations. And whereas the County of Fulton, Indiana establishes policies and procedures for evaluating county budgetary expenses and obligations. And whereas the County of Fulton, Indiana finds it necessary to implement grant approval and administration policies. Now, therefore, be it ordained and established by the County of Fulton, Indiana by its Board of Commissioners and by its County Council, that Item One, the attached Fulton County Grant Approval and Administration Policy is hereby adopted and shall be in full force in effect from and after its adoption by the Commissioners and the Council, and shall supersede and repel existing oral and written policies and procedures. Number two, all elected officials and department heads must complete the Request for Grants Form attached here to if the grant requires administration of grant funds by the Fulton County Auditor, potentially adds personal expenses for the county or requires the use of county matching funds. Item Three, grants submitted by elected officials and department heads that do not involve additional personal expenses or the need for matching funds that are a part of a department's regular funding source are exempt from prior approval by the Board of Commissioners and by Fulton County Council. Number four, if the grant application does not include employment of additional regular or part-time personnel and does not include the need for matching funds, the application does not need Commissioner or Council approval. All grants are subject to Fulton County Internal Controls and Procedures Policies. Any questions or comments?
This is just supposed to kind of streamline and make sure that the proper channels are being followed before somebody obligates, gets a grant that obligates the county to pay.
Yes, because I'm the one that's on the line. I'm the one that has to answer to audits.
Right.
So, if something, the grant's not done properly because somebody else did it, I'm on the hook. They're not on the hook, so... Paperwork should be turned into the auditor's office. It doesn't get turned into the auditor's office, but when it's a federal grant, the federal money, I'm not gonna be on the hook for somebody else's not due diligence.
And as it says here, it does, if it does include additional employment or part-time or the need for matching funds, it does not need
Right.
ours or the Commissioner's approval. So, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a move. Yeah, I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance Zero Four Zero Seven Two Zero Two Five.
So, moved.
Pete moved to adopt. Randy moved to second. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. Pardon?
You have to do three readings. That's a ordinance.
All in favor? That's right. Okay, we have to, I forgot that. That says ordinance three readings, so I will entertain a motion to ordinance by title only. So, Pete moved, he's second. Steve seconded. All in favor? Second reading of the ordinance is an ordinance adopting a Fulton County Grant Approval and Administration Policy. Move to approve. The second reading as written, there is Randy moved, Pete seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. We do three at once?
You can.
Alright, let's do the third and final reading of this ordinance. Ordinance Number Zero Four Zero Seven Two Zero Two Five. It's an ordinance adopting a Fulton County Grant Approval and Administration Policy. One more time. I need a motion to approve. Pete moved to approve, second. Randy seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero.
Yep.
Alright. I see. The next thing is Job Classification Recommendation. Pete, you wanna do this?
Sure. Job Classification Committee met with the clerk today, or, sorry, recorder. A while back, the Job Classification Committee recommendation for her to hire an additional part-timer to help with records transferring to digital. And that was approved. She didn't hire anybody, so what she asked for today was instead of hiring a second part-time person to give her current part-time person a two dollar and twenty-five cent an hour raise to do this. And the Job Classification Committee saw no problem with it, because obviously, this would be a far less expense than a second person. And that's, it was pretty simple and straightforward. And this would bring her up to the other, to the same level as similar offices with the same, uh, in the same category. So, the Job Classification Committee gave their blessing for the recorder to increase her part-time person's pay by two dollars and twenty-five cents a number. In lieu of adding an additional part-time person.
They'll do the job.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, that's, it's pretty straightforward. It's, we originally approved her to hire a, I guess it was temporary part-time until the job was done, which could be several years. They're putting these records, eighteen, what?
Eighteen six.
Thirty-eight.
Eighteen six.
Whenever, whenever Fulton County was established.
Yeah, and she's, and they're, they're currently back to nineteen fifty-three, so this is gonna be an ongoing. And I believe this lady is doing one...
One year a month.
Yeah, one year a month or something, something like, so, I mean, she's gonna be around for a while. But this saves a person being hired for, to do this and pay her more. So, that was our recommendation to do, until we were okay with it.
Motion approved.
Steve made a motion to approve. He's second. Barry seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. You'll let that be known?
Yes, you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we do the additional appropriations, let's get the minutes out of the road. Did we have a chance to look over the minutes and, and look over the corrections that were made? We did all entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. So, any move? Second?
I'll second.
Chase seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. Next, we've got some additional appropriations. First, from the public defenders. It's for personal services of twenty thousand dollars. And...
That's just the council, or Commissioner approval.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to look at that. You're just looking at the front page.
And it's four because of the number of public defender hours they've used. They need more money to...
To be able to hold it or slash.
Yeah.
They don't have enough money.
They're over the budget, so I'll entertain a motion to approve additional appropriation, twenty thousand for the public defender's office.
A lot disearly, but...
Well, they've had some budget cuts as well.
It's, it's, there's a lot of things that are...
We're, we're catching...
Need squared away.
So, I will entertain a motion to approve. Any move to approve? He's second. Patty seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. And next, from the general fund of the sheriff. Personal Services. Seven hundred and sixty dollars. Funds to cover per for an OASDI, the Secretary of Sex Offender Coordinator. Seven hundred and sixty dollars. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Chase moved to approve. He's second.
I'll second.
Steve seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. And the next one is what Dawn talked about, from a general fund. General fund for personal services, twenty-one thousand and seventy-four dollars. And the explanation is a part-time with budget from Perk Perpetuation Fund. And you have to meet certain standards that are paid from that fund. Only a small portion of the part-time employee does cover that, under that. And that is for part-time deputy and OASDI. Any questions? Dawn's still here, so we can ask her if you need to. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Pete moved to approve, he's second? Randy second, all in favor? Seven, zero. And last but not least, we've got two of them here, both of them from the sheriff's Fulton County Jail Maintenance Fund. The first one's for seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And this money was moved back to the other fund or general fund. At the end of the year, we need to move it back to the storage building account. Travis gave us the explanation that the funds weren't encumbered, so.
Yeah, this was.
Transfer back.
This amount was already approved.
It was already approved.
For whatever reason, an error was made and it wasn't encumbered.
So I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Pete moved to approve. Steve second, all in favor? And second, also all the jail maintenance fund of fifty thousand. This is for electrical, HVAC gutters, and downspouts, and site prep for the concrete approach to the front of the building. Travis said he would give us some explanations on this one. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
I think we need to see where we're doing it, that's fine. I mean, we, I don't know what we've spent and what total is.
I'll get all that to you.
Can we do that?
If you want to hold that till next.
All right.
I'll get it all to you.
I'll entertain a motion to table this additional appropriation until we. Steve moved to table, I'll need a second? Pete second, all in favor? Seven, zero. We're going to table that, Travis will get with us. So that brings us to old business. Randy? Any old business?
No, sir.
Chase?
No, sir.
Barry?
No, sir.
Hey?
No.
Steve?
Kinda.
All these appropriations we're doing barely into the second quarter, I think come budget time, we maybe should spend a little more time with our department heads instead of ten minutes to try and get a better grasp on our budgets so that they don't run into these issues so quick. I don't know if that's old business or not, but.
No, that's fine.
I think it's something we should plan on this year. Some of these departments that have a huge budget and we're giving them ten, fifteen minutes to go over, it doesn't seem like it's enough time to be.
In one of the budget workshops or whatever we were at, the head of the DLGF said that if you're into additional appropriations by March, something went wrong.
And I'm not making, I'm not blaming anybody, but we shouldn't be having to appropriate this kind of money.
Some of it was in, you know, in the convergence mistakes.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we can, we can all learn. Any else?
That's it.
Alan, aren't you getting it?
Yep.
Anyone out here? New business, Randy?
No, sir.
Chase?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of things. I wanted to see if we could have someone, I don't remember, from EMS, maybe coming into our board meetings just to kind of give us an update on how things are going and stuff. I don't know who we would reach out to or whatever, but.
Carla was here last month, wasn't she?
Was she? I don't think so.
When was Carla here?
I think she was here earlier.
Was it early?
She was here in January.
I remember she was here, but I don't.
How often does she come doing that? Early. Oh, I wonder if we could have her come more often than that.
We can ask her. Carla Gebhardt, I believe is her last name, is the, and I'm sure, sure she'd be willing to do it.
Just to give us, yeah, kind of update on how things are going and stuff with EMS. And then the other thing I have was, I wanted to see about what everyone thought about having an attorney present at our board meetings. I feel like we've had a lot of issues come up about, like, we needed some legal advice, and we haven't kind of been able to get that. And I feel like it'd be beneficial to have an attorney present in our meetings.
Keep in mind, that's going to be an additional cost, and it's going to come out of the Commissioner's budget.
That's fine with me.
Or not, sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke, I didn't mean Commissioner's budget, Counsel's. Commissioners are already, Commissioners are already. Now, it'd have to come out of Counsel's budget, and I would totally be fine with that.
So I'd want to get the price first. Because I know what we're paying her if they go to the Commissioner's meetings.
And, yeah, well, and everyone whether or not that's something she would want to do, you know.
And we don't even have to have her, we could have anyone.
No, I understand that.
You can hire your own attorney.
We can hire our own.
You can hire whoever you want to hire.
Let's, I guess we could shop around, see what could be cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
I like the idea.
That's all I have.
Barry?
I, I like the idea, I thought that would be a good idea. In fact, I was surprised when I first came on the council, there was none attorney present.
Okay, that's something we'll look into. Patty?
Did you get my email that the SB one passed?
Yes, we're all excited.
And it's my understanding that we need to move quickly on the wraparound on.
We're going to discuss that. Steve? I want to skip Pete, because he's going to back me up.
I don't want to steal your thunder.
You're not going to steal my thunder. All right, we have two things in, that we need to discuss, especially now with, with the SB one passing. We met with the Commissioners and Pete and I sat down with Baker Tilly's representative, Jason Simler, who is so intelligent when it comes to this stuff, and talking about, we have one more year left on the GO bond that we took out, and that's what we use to purchase capital stuff. And it amounts to about a nickel a hundred on the tax rate. It's coming due next year. One of the amendments on the SB one is that if you pay the bond off, you have to wait a year to apply for a new bond. And I had a big question about it the last time we did the bond. I don't think any of you were here, so, and you probably understand it maybe better than I do. But as you have a bond, in the same way with schools, with cities, everything, you borrow the money on the bond, your tax rate is a nickel, say, per hundred. So then you let that bond drop, your tax rate drops down to a penny. Well, the next year you have to have a bond, you have to finance something, then your tax rate goes right back up to a nickel. And the majority of property owners throw a fit, because they get this up and down motion. That's why, and it was explained to me by Jason, that if, that's why a school builds a school now. They paid off a bond, so instead of having their debt service bond go down, they build another school, or they classes or whatever, just to make sure that that bond stays static. Because if you do that, you cannot, what I want to do is collect that money for that one year, and then you've got the money ahead. You can't. They won't allow you to do it. So what you have to do is you have to have, unfortunately, you have to have the debt. So Jason's, we have several large projects we need to do as a county. Most of them are across the street. We are fortunate to have such a historic and beautiful building. Unfortunately, it comes at a cost. And we are in the process of getting some estimates on what it will cost for that roof. One, the roof, others are windows. And that's the second thing I'll go into here in a minute. Right now, a quote we have, and it's an old one, for the roof is one point seven million dollars. So, and I want to preserve that over there as much as we can. So Jason's idea was go ahead and enact, start now with the GO bond, with another GO bond. Therefore, we will have a year overlap, but we won't have to wait that year for that money. That increase will be about a nickel a hundred for the first year. And then it will, because he said he can structure that bond, that our first year's payments will be low because of the, of the bond that we're, we're paying on. Then when that bond pays off, then we can go up to a little, too, that would mitigate the tax increase. Now, is it something that we want to do? Never want to raise taxes. But via that, we also use that bond to buy trucks for the highway department. We also got ambulance needs, we're going to have to be looking at. And we also have end-of-life servers and stuff that, for Josh. And I'm sure someone will come up with other things. And so my question to you, everybody, and Pete and I talked about this, and I, to me was, it has to be a mutual decision amongst us. Because we have, if not, we have to get Jason's approval to start on it. There's differences in the numbers as far as whether it be a five, and I'm not scared of a five or six million dollar bond, but it will be stretched out over seven to eight years. We've got interest rates to look at, we've got costs to look at, but I want your approval for us to proceed and get this started. I didn't want to tell Jason, and Pete didn't either, go ahead and do it without bringing it before everybody. So I guess in, in a motion, I'm asking for a motion to proceed to have Jason get started on a new bond. We can come back with some numbers at a later date. One thing we did tell him, and he told us, we have eight point four million dollar cap on what we can borrow. And Pete and I both told him, just because we got it, don't mean we're going to borrow it. And I think he understood. So I'll entertain a motion to have Jason start the process. And of course, you all will be apprised every step we take.
I don't know how we have a choice.
And we have, we have to have this done by budget time, or at least the process started by budget time this year, so we know what our debt service will be for twenty-six.
And then are we, I don't know if you'd send us an email or whatever, I guess I would like all of us to have access to ask questions.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Once we get the process started, then everybody will be on board with it. I have already talked to some department heads, I've got some wish lists from them. And, but of course, our big thing is across the street.
The biggest concern is the courthouse, the roof and the windows, it's not, not going to be cheap. And then the other concern we have, I know we just bought ambulances, but they aren't going to last forever. We're going to have to start replacing ambulances here and get on a rotation, not necessarily in six months.
Those are, I think they were three hundred thousand dollars apiece.
I think four hundred and fifty, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was around, and you know what's going to happen in two years.
I think we bought four at one point two, I think, but I could be wrong.
They're going to be more expensive.
Oh, absolutely.
They're not going to be any cheaper, that's for sure. That's going to be a big expense coming, and we're going to have to.
And hopefully we can stagger that a little bit, but still.
Another issue with the bond was Jason explained to us that if we waited, we could potentially pay a lot more interest, not get as near as good of a rate by letting it lapse or by not doing it now with these changes in the, coming down the pipe that no one seems to know about.
And right now, our bond rating is pretty good for Fulton County. We are, we are very well, we've done a good job, Counsel, and I appreciate it. So we have the money back and our bond rating looks real good. So we should get a decent interest rate. I don't think we'll get anywhere near the interest rate we got four years ago, but.
He suggested not depleting our rainy day and our post fee, trying to finance it, because then if you have to borrow money, it looks like you don't have anything in your checking account, so you're going to pay more interest versus keeping that, to use that as a credit rating, so to speak, to get a better deal on a bond.
Good point, I forgot about that. No, that's a good point.
We talked about, why don't we just use our petty cash, so to speak? And that's why he suggested we don't do that. Because if you use that and you can't cover the cost and you still have to get a bond, then you don't get near the interest rate or the.
You're depleting your cash reserves, which reduces your bond rating.
Right. Your rating would be higher, so your interest rate would be higher. Snowball effect, basically.
Which would get less net.
Right.
That's what we're after, is the net.
Right. And we're trying to get the most bang for the money we borrow, and the best interest rate possible.
Someone that used to go up there and dump the buckets of water on the fourth floor. We've prolonged this thing about as far as we can. They need to, they need to get at that rough face.
That's the problem. We have a historical courthouse, and if we don't do something about it, we're going to be rebuilding.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where we're at.
I will entertain a motion that we go ahead and get ahold of Jason and get the ball rolling. This is, I absolutely does not guarantee it, we just get the ball rolling until we get, then he'll go through with our assess valuation of the county and the costs, and again, because there's difference of opinions on.
Well, there'll be options, how much we can borrow at this rate, at this term, you know.
And that's something he can tell us, and he's very good at it, so. And yes, it will be sent to all of us. So I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Barry moved to approve, second?
Second.
Chase second, all in favor? Seven, zero. All right, to go along with that, I was mistaken, and I'll admit it, brought to my attention about the courthouse windows, which is another thing that's a big expense. I was in the impression we was talking in Judge Lee's courtroom, and Brian informed me that, no, it was all of them. Now, there are, he has come to me, and he has got a quote from Elevatus, and it's twenty-nine thousand dollars for the architect to come in and give us the specs on the windows.
Twenty-nine?
That's going up to nineteen?
No, 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 I lied to you.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, wasn't it?
I was going to say, I thought it was.
That's what I said, I'm looking at that, and that's my mistake. Nineteen thousand, how's that sound? I threw Brian under the bus. Nineteen thousand five hundred, to be exact, I apologize. And they will come up, and they will write, they will evaluate the windows, write the specs for it, and then we can let them out for a bid. Because we have no idea what the cost, and the city went through a bidding process here a while back, correct me if I'm wrong, and they set out the bids, they got one bid that was way low. Well, come to find out, he didn't even meet any of the specs that come in. So while the low bid looks good, it's not always what it seems. So we want to have consistent specifications throughout, so we know what we're paying for. So, and I told Brian that what we need to do again is one of the things that we need to bring before the council, that we will approve paying Elevatus nineteen thousand five hundred for them to write the specs.
It's a historical building, so it's a little bit more complicated than a normal window company coming in and bidding the windows.
And there's two, two ways to do it. Number one, and Brian had to show this to me, all the transoms at one time were glass. Well, they now have been covered. And they're going to give us two quotes. One is just for the windows, all around the courthouse. All around the courthouse, and two are the windows in transit. So we, we can decide how we want to do it. Do we want to replace the transoms back to original and make those glass? Or leave it as it is and just replace all the windows around. Um, for sound and also for heat and cooling.
Unfortunately, we have to pay it, an architect. To make sure that whoever bids the job bids it correctly, basically is what this fee is for.
So, any other, any questions on that?
I have a question. Uh. Is that something that we've got to do all at once or is that something, I know some of them windows are a lot better shaped than others. So is it something that you just.
Personally, if you're going to go, if you're going to spend a million dollars or more, let's do it.
Well, we've got to pay Elevatus all it wants to, to even do the study to write the specs for a company to bid. I mean, that's a one-time fee.
And we're not sure how many companies will bid.
Yeah.
The roof, we've got one company that still does that type of roofing that made the bid. So. In my mind, I would say, if we're going to do it, let's do it. Instead of dragging it out over several years and then.
Long as you can pay for it.
And long as we can pay for it. That's the key.
This nineteen five, does that include them? So once they bid them, they start working on it, kind of somebody watching to make sure they are doing it properly?
Now, I'm not, I don't know anything about construction.
No, Elevatus is only going to come in and do the specs, draw up what the specs are so that it's bid correctly.
And I think they have a general contractor like we did out here at the jail.
Construction manager.
Yeah.
But if we do this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're hiring an engineering firm to write the specs. And said specs are wrong and we accept a bid. From whoever. And they specked it wrong, we have some fall back on an engineering firm. Right?
That's why they carry liability.
That's why they're carrying, that's part of the fee. That if they write the specs for these windows and we down the road select a contractor, and then the contractor misses spec and say, well, sorry. This is how you wanted a bid. Well, no, that's not. So we're buying some protection with this. Plan.
And of course, it's up to the commissioners to. To approve it or disapprove it, however the chips may fall.
We're basically having to spend nineteen five for a company to tell us how much money we're going to have to spend on windows.
Yeah, but at least we can get, at least. If you and I are going to bid on it, at least we got apples to apples.
Keep in mind, we're, we're doing, we're dealing with a situation right now. In this county that we didn't use an engineering firm on. We just talked about it.
No, I understand that. No, absolutely. That's why, that's why we get, we got it involved, because they're.
No, I'm just saying that as further general conversation. It's nice to save the money and not pay an engineer, but then we all see what can happen when we don't do that. We have a lake issue.
So I am, I will entertain a motion to approve, get an Elevatus involved to write the specs.
How are we going to pay for this? Do we need to figure, do we need to figure that out if we're making this motion?
Um, we've got several different funds we could use.
Any day, I assume.
Well, I would assume more the host fees.
I didn't know if we have to, if we have to determine that before we make this motion or not.
No.
I don't think we do, no.
So has it been determined that this is something that needs to be done?
Yesterday, yesterday. As far, especially the roof.
I know the roof.
The windows, the windows, you know, while we're doing it, let's, let's make it efficient because it's costing us money in the wintertime to heat it. Judge, uh, poor Judge Lee, I've not been up there doing any court sessions. But he says they have a hard time hearing up there with the trucks running up down Main Street that you can't hardly hear in the jury box, even with microphones and speakers.
You have to donkey to attest to that.
I have a hard time hearing in my office from the wind.
Not to mention if we're going to.
You could, my window vibrates.
Absolutely. If we're going to do this via a bond, we probably need to do the whole package. Nobody wants to spend the money, but nobody wants to see our courthouse roof cave in and just.
I don't know how much money Pulaski County spent on their courthouse.
Twenty-five million, it was bad.
It's been, it's been under scaffolding for a couple of years.
In there, it was bad.
But thanks, I'll entertain a motion to have, to get Elevatus started. And again, this is one of the things that. Once we get the quotes back and all, we'll all be apprised of it. So moved. Pete moved to approve. Second? Randy, second. All in favor? I will get ahold of Brian, have him get ahold of Mr. Bai, I believe his name is, at Elevatus. Get started on getting the subspecs. Oh, can I mess anything else up, Kathy? Anybody out there got any new business? Make sure I got everything down I want. When Jason was here, one more thing real quick, please. When Jason was here, we were all at the, out at the jail. For, you know, Paige's presentation. Um, he was talking about a Tiff district. When we sat down with him, um. The mayor was there and the new industrial park that they're proceeding with, south of town. He is going to, the city, I should say, he, the city is taking over, going to take care of the Tiff district, so we do not have to worry about that. So that's something that we don't have to deal with at this time. Now, I have, Michael? We'll get this out of the way real quick.
Yeah.
It's not old or new business, it's just business.
I'll be sure. I'm sorry I was late, I was. The time, would you pass those down to me? Time's been away from me. Um. First off, the dues check is going to be cut tomorrow for the regional plan commission membership. Um. The only thing I was asked by Stephen was, um, next year, have you guys pay it instead of going back through us again? It's a technicality for him is all it amounts to. All the other counties pay directly to them, and so we're the only one that pays for ourselves. So, or I pay for you, so that's, um, that's all done and taken care of. Um, the map I just gave you. Um, is, that's, uh. Just south of the Machiana truck stop there at the top. The part that I've outlined in orange, those three lines, is right now we're, the housing group. We're working with Club Seven Twenty. Uh, our project, our housing project will go. What's outlined in yellow, those two lots right there, uh, which is another fifty, um, or forty-six acres, I'm sorry. Um, the Strater family has approached Club Seven Twenty. And offered that property for sale if it's used for housing. So we quadrupled the housing group, uh, already. Seven Twenty is interested in talking with them. Uh, but that's going to be between Seven Twenty and the Strater family. We won't be involved in all of that at this point. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, some pretty good news. Uh, let's see, what else real quick? Um. We made Newsweek magazine, at least online. And, uh, Fulton County in Indiana is the worst county and the biggest county for percentage population loss. Uh, we lost three hundred and sixteen people in one year, and that puts us right up there. Everybody else is in Mississippi and Alabama. Uh, I kind of dispute that in my head, but, uh, I'm not going to argue with them. Won't win. Uh. We are part of a regional agricultural strategy. Uh. That's come up, uh, and in May, we, there will be a luncheon, uh, where the final process as, uh, will be presented. This is a three-year study. What they're trying to do is agriculturally get our six county, well, actually, what happens is they're trying to get the entire state, but they're going through the regional plan commissions. Uh, to get updated, um. Zoning laws, uh, get a, get a strategy of whatnot. I've come into it late when they hired me. This was already a couple of years in the process. I've, I'm still playing catch-up with it, so as it develops, and I understand it better, I'll let you know what's going on. Uh, and then lastly, um, FEKO applied to Duke Energy, um, at the request of, uh, the two school systems and, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, for a childcare grant, and so we got a forty thousand dollar, uh, grant through Duke Energy to study childcare needs. And that process is undergoing way right now. We'll be, we're passed through because the chamber doesn't have a director at this point in time. Uh, so we'll just be writing checks for them, but there is a, a study going on. If anybody's interested in childcare, wants to get involved in all this. Let me know and I'll get you on the group, whatnot. That's about it for me.
Thanks for taking care of that regional thing.
No.
Any other questions for Michael? I believe that's it. If, unless we have any other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Steve, motion to adjourn. Do you second?
Second.
Steve, second. All in favor? Thank you very much, everybody.